Hey guys, I'll be there as soon as I can. We are on our second accident now on the interstate. And they aren't my accidents, so that's a good thing.
And then there were three. You, me, you, me and Marcia, it looks like the three so far. Marcia's on. Okay, welcome everybody to the City Council Redevelopment Agency and Municipal Building Authority Joint Work Session. Four o'clock work session, we let the record reflect that Councilmember Hare, Councilmember Nadolski, Councilmember White are here. Councilmember White is joining us online. And we know, and we know that Councilmember Blair will be joining us shortly. And would like to excuse Chair Traburka at this time from the meeting. And I haven't heard from Luis, so hopefully we'll see him shortly as well. Quick review of our agenda tonight, 6:00 PM MBA meeting. We'll have a public hearing after the roll call and opening ceremony for the fiscal year 2023-24 Budget Amendment. The Municipal Building Authority Parking Reserve and Project Investment. And that will be presented by our controller, Justin Sorenson. And then we will be having public comments in this meeting. Sort of getting it out of the, not out of the way, but giving that opportunity earlier. Getting that opportunity earlier in the meeting for the following two meetings, there won't be a public comment option, so. Just partly because in the City Council meeting, we'll be moving to a closed session. Any questions on the MBA? Meeting at this point. The following, and then we'll go into our Special Redevelopment Agency meeting. We have approval of minutes, Councilmember Hare or Board Member Hare and Board Member Nadolski, those. Meeting, those minutes are there, and then reports from administration by our Director of CED, Brandon Cooper, on land transfer and development agreement and the participation and incentive agreement for the Parkway Group. And we want to talk, yeah, we talked about this a little bit, yeah.
Well, they're going to be in, that discussion will also happen in the work session.
Right.
Second half of the work session.
Okay, okay. Very good. And then into our Special City Council meeting. We'll have approval of minutes by Councilmember Blair and Councilmember Lopez. And then a public hearing on our budget amendment Municipal Building Authority Parking Reserve. So that's an item that coincides from the Municipal Building Authority meeting. Also presented by Justin Sorenson. And then we will have our budget amendment discussion on the water and sewer improvements for Yaya Foods' expansion. And that will be presented by our Business Development and Manager, Sarah Meese. Also with a whole lot of others, so. And then a commission, the fiscal year 2023 Budget Amendment for Commercial Airline Incentive will be discussed. We'll also discuss that in the, in the work session today. And then it reports from administration on the Business Depot Ogden Lease Revenue Ordinance. Presented by Justin Sorenson, and then lastly, the conveyance of property to the Ogden City Redevelopment Agency. Presented by Ogden or by Brandon Cooper as well. Any, any questions or discussion items on those? At this point. Okay, so we, on our work session, first up, we have invited Bill Nolton, developer, as well as Jonathan Ward from Science Bank. Good timing. To discuss affordable housing and homeownership. Discussion, right, so.
I have, yeah, welcome. Thank you. I apologize for being late. I do have a presentation on my PowerPoint. Is there any way I can plug into your system?
Yes. We'll get that set up for you.
Do you want to?
Really funny or fitty to say.
Brandon, would it be easier if he just emailed it to you? Could you just email it to Brandon and then he'll pull it up through the system? It's kind of a lock system and.
It's a large.
Okay. And we have Jonathan here as well. Do we have Jonathan Ward is here?
Yeah.
He's here. Okay, all right, perfect. Thank you. If, if by chance, Councilmember Lopez is not here today, do we, is somebody else?
He's coming.
He's coming, okay, all right.
I just told Brandon he's going to join us electronically for a minute.
Okay.
And then he'll be here.
Then he'll, so he's in. Okay. Right. The reason Bill was late was to his passing through Christmas Village and it was so, so enthralled by all of the wonderful decorations and the lights and they just lost track of time, right? It was like.
Or he's in, was in this lovely traffic. This is why I take the train, just so you know. I would have been there by now. Hi, Bill.
How are you?
I'm good. Sorry, I'm not there. I'll be there.
The voice in the sky. Oh, yeah. I'm glad you're doing this. Perfect. That's it.
Okay, I'm just going to share it to Zoom. Since I'm here, I'm so sorry.
All right.
Thank you very much. My name is Bill Nolton. I am an affordable housing developer and I jokingly tell people I'm a recovering attorney. I'm a fourth generation real estate professional. My great grandfather started one of the first commercial real estate brokerages in downtown Salt Lake City. My grandfather, who just passed away two months ago at a hundred and two and a half, owned and operated the largest civil engineering firm between Denver and San Francisco. It was called Coon, King and Nolton. And my father, Hooper Nolton III, who is a real estate developer for the past forty-five years and has been my partner until last year, when he decided to slow down at the age of seventy-eight. I, my most recent project is a hundred and five unit affordable housing project on Twenty-Ninth Street in Washington. It's a sixty-two plus, age restricted project. We are a hundred percent leased with a one and a half year waitlist. I've been asked to speak today about Ogden's barriers to homeownership. And as I was preparing this presentation, I came up with a lot of, a lot of statistics and facts from the Utah Legislature, from various national analytics firm, analytics firms. And I would like to have this more of as a discussion than as a, as a lecture, as a presentation. And in law school, the way they do that is through the Socratic method, through question and answer. And there's a lot of people here who have very deep knowledge about the economy in Ogden City, as well as the different pressure points that you've got. And so this is one man's opinion. Take it for what it's worth.
Hey, Bill.
Yes, ma'am.
Hey, sorry, you know, one of the things that you, you're not just coming from a developer standpoint either. You, you also teach at the U. And so, I mean, I, I don't want people to just think that you're only a developer. Even though you're a recovering attorney.
I do own a law firm and I still practice law on the side. I, I am an adjunct professor at the University of Utah's Masters of Real Estate Development Program. I do have a Juris Doctorate and a Masters in Real Estate, and I've been doing this full-time in the affordable housing realm in Utah and Arizona since 2016. Again, disclaimer, I'm not giving anyone legal advice, so this doesn't create an attorney-client privileged relationship. This is some of the experience of who we are and what we've done in the past. This isn't to say that I'm the greatest thing since sliced bread. I just let you know that I've been a part of about creating a thousand housing units, both market rate and affordable, meaning low income. To give you an idea, our one-bedroom apartment on Twenty-Ninth Street in Washington starts at three hundred and eighty dollars a month for those earning twenty-five percent AMI or less. So you cannot drive around Ogden, Weber County, Salt Lake City, Orem, Provo, St. George, anywhere without seeing the effects of the housing crisis. And, you know, some of the, some of the folks who are of my father's vintage will say, well, if the younger generation would quit eating avocado toast and quit eating out for dinner and stop doing DoorDash, they could afford a home. I respectfully disagree on multiple fronts. So, right now, in America, there's a need for, there's a, there's a deficit of eleven million low-income housing units. Now, when I say low income, what does that mean? So I'm just going to go around the room. What do we, what do we think low income means? What's the average income in Ogden City? Forty-six thousand dollars. What's the starting wage of a schoolteacher in Ogden City? Fifty-three? What about a firefighter? What about a police officer? What is it? Twenty-four bucks an hour, so that equates to what? Forty-eight thousand, okay. The average market rate rent for a one-bedroom apartment in downtown Ogden is thirteen hundred dollars a month. You have to make fifty-two thousand dollars a year to qualify for a thirteen hundred dollar per month rent. Okay, so what's the average home price in Ogden? Four hundred and thirty, so average listing price, according to the data I pulled today from the, from the Wasatch Front Multiple Listing Service, average list price is four hundred and seventy-four thousand, average sale price is four hundred and thirty thousand. So let's do some math here. Assuming you get a, an FHA loan, how much, what percentage of down payment do you need to qualify for an FHA loan right now? What is it? Three percent? Three percent using different first-time homebuyer programs. Traditionally, it's around ten percent. So ten percent of the average median price of four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. How long would it take people in this room today? Not your kids, not your parents, but people in this room today, how long would it take you to save forty-three thousand dollars? So that's a, that's a ten percent down, okay? So take ten percent off of the four hundred and thirty thousand dollar price, so let's call it three ninety. What is the mortgage payment at three hundred and ninety thousand dollars a year amortized over thirty years at eight percent interest?
Two thousand eight thirty-nine.
Two thousand eight thirty-nine, three thousand dollars in the bank. How many of you in this room can afford a three thousand dollar mortgage payment? I cannot, and I'm a greedy, rich SOB developer, right? What I'm saying is, this problem is systemic. It's not, it's not just Ogden City. This is a problem for the entire state of Utah, for the entire country. So I've got some statistics here that I pulled from the Kim Gardner Policy Institute, and also from the scathing audit that was released by the Utah Legislature last week regarding the housing problems. The housing shortage in Utah decreased from fifty-six thousand units in twenty-seventeen to twenty-eight thousand units in twenty-twenty-two. That's great. We've halved the, the housing shortage. What is happening today is based on interest rates, based on the contraction in the development market, and a number of different, different economic factors. This audit, which was released by the Utah Legislature, estimates that there's going to be a need for approximately twenty-nine thousand new units per year. That's just to keep pace with, with influx of migration of people who are going to be first-time homebuyers. Twenty-nine thousand new units per year. To give you an idea, in my world, the low-income housing tax credit world where we build affordable housing apartments, there is a demand today in Utah for thirty-five thousand affordable housing units. How much comes online per year statewide? Seven hundred. Do you know what that translates to? When I opened my doors on Twenty-Ninth Street in Washington, we got our CFO on April twenty-ninth, I was fifty percent occupied day one. Not least occupied. This means that people signed a lease before we opened, and the day we opened, we were having fifteen-minute increments where you could move in. Today, that project is a hundred percent leased, and we have a year and a half waitlist. Every other Lytech project, and Lytech is an acronym that stands for Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Project. Every other project in Ogden has a two-to-three-year waitlist, because I surveyed them all in preparation for this meeting. So, I was asked specifically, how, how does Ogden come up to, to bridge the gap of, of homeownership? And I think that's a, a very large ask. I don't know how you do it. According to the Kim Gardner Institute, only fifteen percent of people living in Utah who are renting can afford to pay for a very modestly priced three hundred to four hundred thousand dollar home. Fifteen percent. So what happens to the other eighty-five percent? What do you do? Can the city of Ogden manufacture the marketplace going against macroeconomic factors which are impacting everybody? And I respectfully suggest, no, you cannot. And so there are a couple other discussion points that we need to talk about. If you haven't read the legislative audit, I have sent it to council chambers to, to review, and it's scathing. I have been in meetings in this city and in surrounding cities where things have been said to me of, of the opinion, we don't need low-income housing. We've got too much of it. We bear the brunt of it for the county. We bear the brunt of it for the state. We don't like density. We don't like the tenants it brings. We don't like the crime it brings. We don't like the impact on services. The, the project that I, that I completed on Twenty-Ninth Street in Washington, which won the twenty-twenty-two Urban Project of the Year, it's a very nice project. I had a lot of resistance in building that project from an elected official and a staff standpoint. And then the day we opened up and we have all the press there, everyone shows up for the ribbon cutting. What I'm saying is, is there needs to be a shift in mindset. And the shift is Utah, I, so I'm a, I'm a fifth-generation Utah. Most people in Utah, when they think of the American dream, they think of buying a third-acre lot home with a white picket fence. Well, those days are over. Where you, we are landlocked. We've got a, a mountain range and a, and a lake on both sides. Where are you going to build? The, the answer, according to the, to the state, is density. You need to have density. And it said specifically, and I quote, "The prevalence of single-family homes rather than higher density is a recipe for trouble." And the state is going to force on many jurisdictions an increase in density on a wide scale. And this has been building for, for a few years. I have been in meetings in, in some of your neighboring jurisdictions where elected officials have said to me, we don't care about affordable housing. We don't want it, and it's not coming here. We want five hundred thousand dollar single-family residential homes, which no one in our city can afford. And the state is contemplating today incentives and penalties for those jurisdictions who do not comply with this need. And it's, it's one of those things where if you don't get in front of this, it's going to be shoved down your throat. One of the discussion points we had is, what about condominiums? So this is a condominium structure that failed in Florida last year. Who remembers seeing this? How many lawyers in the room do I have? How many insurance people do I have? Who, who pays for that? That's a condo. So I've got my little, you know, nine hundred and fifty square foot condo there on the side that fell. Does my farmer's insurance policy rebuild my unit? Who pays for it? The only way condominiums, density and condominium homeownership works is if you have massive litigation and tort reform. Because as a developer and as a general contractor and as an insurance person, the, the cost and the penalties for building condominiums is prohibitive. Where I can build, so say that building that just collapsed there, or half of it collapsed. Say that's a fifty million dollar building. And I can go and build a fifty million dollar apartment that I own outright and don't have the trailing liability, which doesn't end at year one with your warranties. It, it extends, the construction defect laws extend indefinitely. What incentive do I have to attract capital, to get it insured, and to get a, a general contractor to build it? I met with Slado Pickens about doing a condominium. Slado Pickens of RNO Construction here in Ogden. And he says, oh, we won't, we won't build condominiums. I talked to Steve Keer of Keer Construction. Oh, we, we won't build condominiums, because the liability extends to them as well. And so, I'm afraid I don't have a specific answer for how to increase homeownership in Ogden. But I do know that you have a choice as elected officials and as staff members. It's either homelessness or housing. And there needs to be a mind shift as to what that looks like. If you haven't seen it, I encourage you to come. This is our project at Twenty-Ninth Street in Washington. We have people here who were living in their car for three years prior to moving in. We have people here who were from the homeless shelter, who are veterans, who are, you know, retired schoolteachers living on a fixed income. And if you walked in there and you saw this, would you think this is a low-income property? No, because I can tell you, because I spoke with your staff, this is built to a higher standard than most market-rate apartments in town. From an environmental standpoint, from a green energy standpoint, from an efficiency standpoint. These are market-rate rental townhomes that we've built. So everyone's looking at me like, okay, therefore what? How do we? How do we move this forward? I know the city of Ogden in the past has done projects where they have, they have incentivized developers to come in to build for sell product that's at a reduced, a reduced price. It's not real market rate pricing. How many of those can you do? What was that? Not, not enough, no. And so my question to you, and again, this is a collaborative discussion. How do you house your population for the schoolteachers, for the police officers, for the nurses, for the cops, for the city workers who are making less than sixty thousand dollars a year? Where are they going to live? These are some projects we've built in, in Phoenix. And I'm happy to provide this to whoever wants to hear it, and I have all of the data to back this up. I encourage you all, if you haven't, read the state's audit of the housing problem and read what's coming down the pipe. As I have spoken with, with the Governor's Legislative Committee and the Utah Housing Corporation, what's coming is the state's going to take over some of your zoning laws. And it's basically going to say, if you are building affordable housing and it fits within these parameters, city, you either get on board or you're in violation of state law. And that is coming. But with that, I will open it up. Questions, answers, discussion points. Mayor-elect, what are your thoughts?
We're just all waiting on the good news, Bill.
So the problems you've got from a real estate development standpoint, generally speaking. Moody Analytics released a report last week stating that ninety percent of all commercial mortgage-backed securities for offices defaulted last month to the equivalent of two-point-one trillion dollars. That means there are a number of office landlords who are handing the keys back to the bank saying, we're out. Two days ago, in the Wall Street Journal, Mark Zuckerberg wrote a hundred and eighty-seven million dollar check and broke an eighteen-year lease because it's office space he can't fill. Every national bank that I've spoken to in the last thirty days says they will not lend on any office, office projects. Regarding multifamily, so apartments, townhomes, rental units, they're basically saying, hey, in years past, we'll do eighty percent loan to costs. Well, now it's seventy-five percent loan to costs. Well, now it's sixty percent loan to cost. Or now it's fifty percent loan to cost. Well, if you're, as you're building your capital stack, how do you make up that difference? That means Uncle Bill comes to the table with more cash, and I don't get a return on my investment. And so as I'm going out talking to high-net-worth individuals to invest in my projects, and they say, well, Bill, you're promising me a two percent return. I can go put it in a CD at Cash Valley Bank and get five percent. Development's stopping. Aside from a few niche projects that, that there, there will always be incentives to build on. And so the question becomes, how do you, as a jurisdiction, streamline and make it easier for development to occur? Through your RDAs, through TIF, through, you know, having shorty with your development process? And these are not easy questions.
For my serious answer to your question, once we, like, you know, you presented it in your, in your style and your way. You didn't, you presented a lot of fact, though, and anybody that ran for office in this last cycle can attest that this is the conversation of the community. And it's not just our community. Like you said, it's, it's across the board. Macroeconomics galore are at play. But once you start to dig into it and you try and figure out a solution, you cannot stop thinking about it. You get wrapped around the axle so fast because the, the macroeconomic pressures are so big, yet the pressures on our people are so significant. And everybody's looking to us for the solution. We all need to be wrapped around the axle to the point where we can't sleep at night because we're thinking about it so much. It's that serious of an issue. And moving forward, if we're not at that level, then we are not meeting our people where they're at.
I, I've been criticized in public forums and in my, my master's program class at the U for saying this, but if you want to talk about the quickest way to destabilize a civilization, one of the number one elements is housing instability. If someone can't afford to live, and, you know, they're working their, their butts off forty hours a week and they can't afford to pay rent or afford a three thousand dollar per month mortgage on a very basic home, I mean, that's when stuff starts, starts falling apart.
I, I have a question, I guess. I, I'm, I've been working with, you know, from the COG, with our other surrounding sister communities on this very issue. You know, I, I know that there has been in the past, with our other surrounding sister communities on this very issue. You know, I, I know that there has been in the past and maybe still is in some communities that digging in your heels. We don't, we don't want anything smaller than one acre lots and we don't care. However, I think most are coming around. They're, they're kind of getting that their kids don't have anywhere to go.
Right.
And uh,
And their parents don't have anywhere to retire to.
And wait, well, that and, and the parents' basement's already full.
That's right.
You know, so, so those are the kind of things that, that have happened over the last you know, half a dozen years. You know, the basements are filling up with, that the kids aren't leaving. They're, they're just not going anywhere. And, and you know, we've always kind of had Brandon, where'd you go?
He's back, Brian.
What's our mission statement? We want to provide a broad variety of houses over, tell us what it is.
Affordability.
Yeah, yeah. So, and it, and it does seem really clear to me that, that if we continue to throw rentals into the market and that's all we put in, that we're locking our people into a poverty situation. Cause there's, because there's never going to be anywhere else to buy. You know, that's, that's the way all of us that have homes kind of broke out of that, you know, it started to kind of build some wealth because we bought a house and got locked into the, into the system. And, and it seems clear to me, at least, you know, in, in, in a countywide perspective, that if we, if some of our surrounding communities did start to build with some uh, some density, you know, I, I, I agree with you. Density is really going to be the solution. I, I, I can't say it another way. That uh, that, that could take some of the, some of the pressure off of a city like Ogden.
I agree.
And, and so that's, that's, I, I mean, I've, as the council member that's the member of the cog, I've been pushing really hard and, and a year ago, almost a year ago, we got together and made a resolution that we're gonna, we're gonna work on a countywide housing master plan where we can identify those areas where density can occur and what kind of density is kind of up to these individual communities and the, the state also, I mean, and I know they always want to figure the problems ours, but you know, some of the problems there.
I, I agree with that too.
And uh, we, we can't require anybody to build a for purchase product. You know, we, they, they, they tighten our hands to, to the point where we can't require that anywhere. And we need to be able to. Just to kind of let the, you know, I mean, if, if I bought a starter home, I need to be able to build medium home, you know, buy the medium home and vacate the starter home for somebody who's, who's renting, you know, need to be able to do that. Uh, I, I am impressed by your grasp of the entire problem and so far you've been Earl Downer. You know, I, I'm, I'm really hoping we can find some kind of
I'm the most popular guy at every cocktail party.
Yeah, we need to, we need to find some glimmer of hope that we can, okay, let's, let's go this way. Let's, let's work on it from this angle. Because I, I really do think that Ogden, you, you said it, I, and I kind of agree with it. Maybe, maybe you're going to slam me for it, but you know, we, we, we do have a lot of apartments going in. An, an unrealistic proportion, an unbalanced proportion.
So I, I have a bit of a different paradigm and it's based on my experience alone. And I'm forty five and I, I still have a lot of life to live and I can still learn a lot from people who've been down the road ahead of me. But I graduated law school and my master's program in two thousand eight in Phoenix, Arizona. Home prices plummeted seventy percent during that time. And up until that point in my life, I was taught, your home is the greatest investment you're ever going to make. It's the greatest path to building wealth. I respectfully disagree. Your home is not an investment. Your home is a place to live. It is not a financial vehicle. It is not a C D, is not a T bill. It is not a stock portfolio. It is not a bond. It is a place to live.
But once you get a mortgage, the mortgage isn't going to go up every time the, the market allows it to.
Correct.
That's, that's the point that, that's why it works to, to buy a home.
And I do agree with that. You do have shorty of payment. You do know that, hey, it's going to be this every month and I can, I can budget that. But the economy has also changed since two thousand eight. If I get a job at Goldman Sachs, um, chances are I can work in Salt Lake. I can work in New York. I can work in Honolulu. I can work in Las Vegas. I can work in Boise and commute. And a lot of people in my, in my vintage, in my generation are saying, well, I don't want to be tied down to a thirty year mortgage. I don't, I don't want to be tied down to a home. And if you look at the demographic statistics, like you said, most people are living in their parents' basement because they're like, well, why do I want to tie myself to a home that I might not be able to sell for what I paid for it? If I've got a job offer in Boise or I've got a job offer in St. George. And therein lies one of the biggest loggerheads you have. Is you have a certain demographic of the population saying homeownership, homeownership, homeownership. And then you have uh, the younger generation whose core belief system is, I don't want to own a home. Why am I going to save forty five thousand dollars to pay three thousand dollars a month to rent when I can live in a highly amenitized rental unit where I don't have to own a lawnmower? I don't have to cut the grass. I don't have to fix the light bulbs. I don't have to fix the toilet. I pay my rent and I, they take care of everything. Therein lies the, the psychological paradigm. And it's something that I don't think the cities are talking about enough. Because my experience has been a municipality cannot manufacture the marketplace. You can't control costs of lumber. You cannot control the price of dirt. You cannot control interest rates. You cannot control the supply of money. What you can do is make it in a, a business friendly environment from a tax basis and from a regulation standpoint and give developers and investors such as myself, shorty that, hey, if I put twenty one million dollars into your local economy, which is what I did on twenty ninth street in Washington, I'm going to have the support of the administration. I'm going to have the support of the staff. I'm going to have the support of all that because the worst thing you can do is sign a twenty one million dollar guarantee as a, as an investor that can bankrupt me and my family very quickly. And then have someone in the city say, I like what you've done here and yes, it meets the code, but Ogden's a brick city, so you need to do, build brick all the way up and that's a million dollar change order. Guess who that happened to?
All right. Um, that's a lot to think about for sure. And, and uh, you know, setting, setting up Jonathan for uh, to come in as this, um, I, was there a voice online that?
I just wanted to ask a quick question. So, when you, when you talk about um, a light tech building, hundred units and a regular building, hundred units, is there a property tax difference? So we, so you pay less prop, in property taxes?
Yes, because I'm getting less revenue. Yeah, okay. Um, one other point I will say, and just, there are a number of um, buzzwords and buzz phrases that elected officials and you've heard the phrase NIMBY, not in my backyard, that they have towards density. And I just wanted to spell those right away. Right after I brought my project online, I wrote an article in the Standard Examiner. Is that the name of the paper up here? Basically, it was a, it was a guest editorial saying, we need more affordable housing and here's how we do it. An elected official in a neighboring community got on board and said, oh, I disagree. Mr. Knowlton is, is wrong. And look at all the water he's using on that project. That elected official is an alfalfa farmer. Alfalfa takes up sixty six percent of all potable water in Utah and makes up less than one percent of G D P. What I'm saying is, is we need to be honest with ourselves. When we're coming up with these, these objections to people saying, oh, well, what about the water? Well, my building that I built, the, the light tech building because of the state regulations, it uses far less water than any single family residential property and any market rate property. And so there's a number of these little taglines that people say like, oh, it brings crime or oh, you're not paying your fair share of increased police and increased fire. And I'm like, I'm pretty sure I wrote Ogden a, a line item for impact fees for all this stuff. I mean, what I'm saying is, is not audit rate. But what I'm saying is, um, if we're gonna, if we're gonna solve this problem, people need to start being honest about what the issues are. And I agree with you. It would be wonderful if everyone could own a home. But what if they don't want to?
I, I'm with you, but you know, I, I I have six kids. I, I actually think they'll probably want to own a home. I mean, you know, I've got some thirty year olds that that are trying to save up that money. You know, they, they do want to be kind of anchored more than many others do, but they have friends that don't. I, I, I get your, your point. I, I certainly don't disagree with you in, in the least. But uh, but the ones that want to buy a home cannot right now. That's just not. And you mentioned all the reasons.
Yeah, I was, I was going to say that you're dead right about the paradigm. And that's kind of the problem is our paradigms are set by our own experiences, right? And I've had my, I've had this discussion with my dad. His financial paradigm was set by a lot of the experiences he had. He tells me about staying home during the Jimmy Carter administration and the high interest rates and the
Gas shortages.
Yeah, and he's like that, that's set a lot of my, his paradigm. And mine has a lot to do with the um, real estate crash and the pandemic and so on, right? So part of the problem is that paradigm is being set for a younger generation right now. And if they're not ever thinking about homeownership opportunities, then they're not ever going to have that equity, equity. And now we're talking about an entire generation that is going to have a completely different challenge when it comes to uh, retirement planning and um, and what about their children? How are they going to get ahead? Mine are going to get ahead because my wife and I entered the market at the right time, right? And so
And that, and respectfully, was that a function of your superior?
Timing.
Yeah, it's luck. It's luck.
Right.
And so are we basically saying that we are going to leave the housing issue to luck?
No.
And to timing.
Exactly, and
And the answer is no.
And we lucked out because we entered post nine eleven when, when rates went down and property, you know what I'm saying? But yeah, luck's not going to be good enough and we can't just say, well, that's just how this generation is. Right? Or else we're kicking the can down the road too. So these are really fundamental problems that have generational impacts.
Agreed. And, and I will say this. I'm very bullish on Ogden because of the experiences I've had here and the people that I've worked with here that I consider very dear friends and confidants and I've, I, I'm very bullish on Ogden. In my humble opinion, what Ogden can do to help this housing issue is encourage density where it's appropriate. Encourage better building standards for all, all housing, not just light tech. You need to, Energy Star, Enterprise Green. You know, all of those things, they need to be built to a higher standard so they last longer. There is a developer in town who just had a project shut down on twenty fifth street. And they've given me a black eye in this community because of the, the very low quality of, of building that they've, that they've produced. You can have your cake and eat it too by increasing your building standards with the density. Say, okay, Bill, you want to build a project? Great. We'll give you four stories. We'll give you this parking ratio, but you have to build to this standard. And I'm building to that standard anyway because I'm required to by the state. But give developers shorty. If I, if there's an ordinance written down that says, if you do this, this and this, we'll let you build that. Man, make that your, your bond. Make that oak. Make it so I can depend on that. Cause I'll, I'd love to come back here with my money.
Okay. Luis has a quick comment and then we're going to invite Jonathan up. We're just in the interest of time. Thank you. Thank you, Bill. No, that's okay.
So, Bill is, is, I, I was listening online. Uh, so it, it's what you're saying then that um, the, the answer to housing is uh, it's not necessarily homeownership, but is uh, light tech. So uh, low, I, low cost rental, not homeownership? Is that, that's the answer in, in a nutshell, in a, in a, in a?
No, i- in a nutshell, I think you need a variety of all housing types. But what I'm saying is the reality of homeownership for eighty five percent of the population is not reality. And so as you're formulating your policies, do you want to build your policies to target the fifteen percent who can afford a home? Or the eighty five percent who need a place to live?
Thank you. All right, Jonathan, join us up here. Thank you.
About some lending.
Appreciate Bill's comments. My name's Jonathan Ward from Zion's Bank. I uh, work in the public finance department. We've got four Zion's Bank employees here. Justin Gardner and Elias Dode will be starting off the presentation discussing housing affordability from the Zion's lending standpoint. And then Mark Anderson and I, who are both in the public finance uh, department, will be wrapping up with some of the public finance tools that are available to help address the need. And I agree with Mr. Knowlton that this housing affordability is not something that one city can solve on its own. The um, the glimmer of hope that perhaps I can, can shed is that what you do does help. It might not solve the whole problem, but you, you can take steps and I think you have as a city already to, to take steps to help a problem, a massive problem. So with that, Justin, we'll turn it over to you.
Justin, go ahead and hit the button on there and that'll turn your mic on so we can all hear you. There we go.
Perfect. Thank you. Perfect. Yeah. So to Jonathan's point, kind of Elias and I work in the commercial real estate department and kind of how we look at kind of lending, good segue, Bill kind of led in on some of the issues and challenges kind of in the commercial real estate that, that banks kind of what we're showing today is, is kind of discussion point by no means lending advice or any of that nature. But kind of what we've seen is some of the challenges and, and some of the best practices that, that we've seen kind of in, in kind of navigating this, this challenging environment that, that we're currently in right now. Just hit enter, is that? Perfect, okay. So kind of at a high level, kind of some of the challenges and, and Bill kind of mentioned some of them that we're seeing right now in, in commercial real estate. And this is specifically for market rate, but, but also probably applies to light tech, which Elias will kind of dive into as well on the affordable side. And kind of what we're seeing kind of right now is interest rates. You know, the last couple of years have more than doubled, certainly created challenges. Um, and we'll dive into this a little more, required equity in the projects. To Bill's point earlier, you know, projects a couple of years ago, we're requiring twenty to twenty five percent potential equity in, into these deals. And now you're looking at you know, forty five, forty, forty five, fifty percent equity that's, that's required into these deals, which is a significant number, as we'll see in, in example, kind of later on. Uh, construction costs um, have certainly gone up. Well, that's a good question. I mean, depending, I mean, some have, you know, on the, on the uh, lumber side, we've seen construction costs kind of go down on lumber and things like that. Um, so I think construction costs for the past two years have been rising, but we have seen on certain line items like lumber costs have come down um, from that regard, yep. Um, one of the challenges we have is C R E concentrations as far as kind of too many. And what that really means is commercial real estate, sorry. Yeah. Too many acronyms, light tech, C R E, commercial real estate, kind of concentrations. Do we have too much? You know, as a bank, do we have too much multifamily in, in Ogden City or in Salt Lake City? Or do we have too much retail in, in there from a bank perspective? Um, that maybe we're not comfortable. Maybe the market dictates that, hey, there's a need for more multifamily, but maybe as a bank, we feel like, hey, we've kind of hit our, our limits in that, in that particular market potentially based on our product type. Bill kind of mentioned office. Office is certainly one that's a very challenging. Uh, I don't think it's anyone's, to anyone surprised that office is certainly challenging uh, right now. A lot of banks, to Bill's point, aren't lending on office. We are still lending on office. Certainly it's getting a lot more scrutiny and it's a lot more conservative um, kind of in our policies. But, but it's one that's getting a lot more um, scrutiny on that. And then retail, kind of the other one is um, you know, from retail, go at ground floor retail, a lot of uh, multifamily projects are, are requiring or, or have some sort of a ground floor retail um, component to them. Um, that is certainly a challenge for a bank to kind of, to lend into that. Some of it is just, I guess, at a high level from a, from a retail perspective, depending on you know, if it's a ground floor retail and you're just putting it in twenty five hundred or five thousand square feet into a, a multifamily apartment, for example. Does it fill a need or is it just because the city is requiring it? Does it really help the residents there if you're throwing in, you know, some, some retail, and I don't want to mention any names specifically, but a retail component that doesn't really benefit the overall project um, to it, but it's really just kind of looked at as maybe a filler space. Um, can kind of create challenges for a bank to, to lend against that income, that potential income. Um, specifically.
Got a question, Bill?
Uh, yeah, that's a good question. Uh, you know, statistically don't have that number, but a lot of times we won't include the income from the, the ground floor retail against the loan amount. So if the income were, say, fifty thousand from that kind of retail component, we would not include that. We would consider that sort of as a bonus.
Amenity spaces for the multi fam.
That's an easier sell, I think, when it, when it benefits the overall project instead of just a filler space to that regard. Some of the best practices that we've seen kind of from a lender's side, kind of looking at, you know, what helps us get comfortable with a project, you know, obviously pre-leasing in a project is. Is a big deal. Um, doesn't solve all the problems because a tenant to, to Bill's earlier point, you know, you're seeing a lot of. Uh, office space that's getting subleased um or that they're just paying a buyout. Or they're renegotiating a lease, you know, two years into a ten year term that says, hey, I wanna renegotiate my terms and so. So it doesn't solve all the problems, but it certainly gets a bank more comfortable if there is some pre-leasing in office retail, obviously from a multifamily component, there's. You're not gonna have, you know, pre-leasing um in that regard. Um, early bank involvement's a good thing for us, you know, if, if a developer comes to us, you know. Two months before they, they need to close on the loan and says, hey, I need a loan, you know, sometimes it's hard, typically it, you know, to get everything in order to kind of get that. That process and say sixty days type of thing. So early bank involvement, um, the earlier we can get involved, um, the better. Um, as we know through the project and then just kind of having a strong seasoned developer that's kind of done this before, kind of. Weathered some of these kind of cycles and some of these storms. Um, specifically, and we'll just kind of go through these pretty quick. These are kind of just, kind of how the bank looks at different property types, multifamily, retail, office. Um, some of the underwriting criteria that we would use, kind of the lesser or um LTV is a loan to value. Um, loan, the value of the property, kind of that stabilization, loan to cost would be the LTC. Um, and then a minimum debt service uh coverage requirement on that DSCR that we would acquire. Um, and then kind of maturity. So these are kind of, and then just kind of a specific example here on mul- on market rate. This is one, NOI is kind of the income that a, that a property would generate. Um, you know, on a, this specific example, we just kind of use numbers. This is kind of where we're seeing things kind of pencil in. Uh, right now is in that fifty-five-ish, maybe sixty percent loan to cost to re, to achieve that kind of one ti- one. One point two times coverage on the debt. Um, and kind of from this example, um, here, kind of a little under a million in, in income, net operating income is sixteen million dollar cost. Um, kind of how the bank would look at is a potential loan of nine to about nine and a half million dollars. Um, which we require anywhere from seven to almost eight million dollars of equity into the project, putting it around a fifty-five to sixty percent of cost. Good question. Yeah, we haven't, we didn't run those numbers to see, yeah. On, on a fifty-five to sixty percent cost would, yeah. I mean, we're seeing, we're still seeing some, to your point earlier, we are still seeing some developers that are developing certainly fewer. Um, there's some, you know, when we present these numbers and say, hey, they're expecting a loan amount, say, ten and a half to eleven million and say, hey, we can lend you nine. There is some shock um on their end and obviously they're running the IRR calculation, you know, the returns and the calculations kind of on their end. Um. That we're not necessarily running on our end to see, uh, you know, as far, but certainly if it doesn't fit in, inside their return kind of policies and so. Certainly, there's a lot more shock when they're used to a twenty percent equity into a project and now they're, we're telling them, hey, you got forty to forty-five percent equity into, almost doubling their. Their equity in. Um. And then just kind of office, kind of how we're looking at it, certainly more conservative on the office side, you know, on the multifamily, it was a one. Point two times coverage. Now we're at a one, five times coverage um at a stress nine and a quarter rate. That doesn't necessarily mean that that's. The interest rate on the loan, that just necessarily means that's how we're gonna stress it. We're gonna stress kind of office a lot more and it's. And requiring, you know, to have some sort of a pre-leasing in there. Um, and then si- similar on retail, um, kind of how we'd look at it on, on retail, it's a one, three coverage. Um, at our twenty-five year amortization um at an eight percent rate. Kind of showing kind of how we look at and kind of how we kind of weigh the risks on the different property types.
Couple, I have a.
Go ahead, yeah.
Couple of questions, right? Um, so one of the things he said with the CRE uh concentration challenges in. Are there benchmarks of what cities are doing now? Like Ogden doesn't have a lot of class A. I'd even say class B kind of office. Um, so are there benchmarks that we should be shooting for? Or is that something that you guys are looking at right now to help cities um determine if they have too much, if they don't have enough?
Too much office or too much. Uh, not necessarily kind of on our side to kind of, there might be a group within the bank that is, that is. Consulting on, on, or kind of maybe being a reliance for the city or kind of consulting on that. From our regard, not really our place to come in and say, hey, you've got too much office or. But if we came in and we looked at it and said, hey, you've got hypothetically fifty class A office buildings and you had a developer that came in and said, hey, I wanna. Build five more, we may look at that and say, hey. We're not comfortable with that because we as a bank feel fifty is too many. You as a city may not, you may as a city feel like, hey, we need sixty. We as a bank may say, hey, that's, that's too many. Or we may have lent on twenty of those fifty hypothetically and said, hey, we're not comfortable with any more lending in that space. Because we're pretty heavily concentrated in one certain area.
I, I have a question also, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Uh, you know, Bill was talking. Down pretty heavily this condominium concept, you know, why there, it's just so risky. Um, is there, like, are townhomes in the same boat or? Is there, is there a, is there a for sale product that isn't gonna be under that same problem?
So for sale, and he'll kind of dive into that a little on the light tech, as far as kind of for sale products. We look at that a little differently than a for rent product. On a for rent product, kind of how the bank gets paid back is the rental income from the tenants on a for sale. You're kind of doing a little different because it's, if you're selling it four hu- four hundred thousand dollars or hypothetically one of those units. Then the bank expects a paydown. That's how we're gonna get repaid is, is through the sale of those, those townhomes. Not necessarily that we look, I mean, we, we look at them very differently just because of the. Source of repayment's gonna be one from rental income or one from the, from the sale item, but we certainly have financed townhome products, both for rent and. And for sale.
Thanks, Justin. So I, I primarily spec- uh specialize in uh low income housing tax credit CRA and affordable housing. And uh to, to take you through some of the policies that we look at, that we do have some more um generous policies as far as longer amortizations. Higher advance rates and lower debt covered ratios. Um, that is balanced by the fact that with higher interest rates, um, sometimes those uh. Those loan to value metrics or loan to cost metrics may still be lower because um of the overall um debt burden that they all. All bear, just given the market rates that are there, so. And an example of a low income housing tax credit project that I'm looking at. Um, pro forma NOI of three hundred and thirty-five thousand a year, uh thirteen point six million construction costs. Um, uh, a loan between nine and a half and ten and a half million. Um, that ends up getting paid down from uh tax credits. Down to a term loan of three and a half to four point one million dollars. Um, and again, that equity is primarily from a tax credit investor. Who is investing in that project. Um, and in this particular example, the range of loan to cost um during construction is a seventy to seventy-five percent. Um, one of the things that uh Zion's is also pursues is what we call a conventional affordable. Um, housing policy. And so we generally apply the same metrics. To anyone who may be choosing to uh develop affordable housing. Um, a- and this may come in the way of certain municipalities dictate that affordable housing be built. Um, we see that a lot in places like Park City where they say if you wanna build um more luxury homes. You have to put in some affordable housing. Um, and so we can, uh, we can apply these same lending metrics. That we would use on low income housing tax credit projects to um projects that are still deed restricted and, and are required to have affordable housing. Um, and so an example of this. Uh, results in NOI of one point seven million, construction costs of thirty million, uh potential loan between twenty-one and twenty-three million. Um, and, and requires equity or, which could include the land of seven to eight million dollars with the. Loan to cost in the seventy to seventy-five percent range. Um, we have found that developers of affordable housing. Um, frequently can include a land lease component. We've seen projects where um municipalities. Uh leased the, the land to the developers. Um, and then these programs frequently attract soft debtor grants, including uh FHLB grants. Uh, Olean Walker programs and RDA funds. Um, a- and, and those are, are crucial aspects to help um balance the, the costs and. Um, you know, the rising interest rates a- against the um, you know, so that the project can, can pencil. Um, some resources uh you may or may not be familiar with. On the pre-development side, there's the Utah Equitable TOD Fund. Uh, they provide uh pre-development financing to developers. That are looking at um developing primarily light tech projects, um low income housing tax credit projects. And then um some. Kind of as a sidebar, this is, you know, some, some organizations you might also be interested in, in talking to. You may be familiar with the Rocky Mountain Homes Fund. Uh, it's Mark and Steve Waldrop. They have a, a path to homeownership through a, a rent to own um type program. Um, and, and that may speak a little bit more to your question about, you know, really getting to how, how is there a path to homeownership versus renting? Um, they kind of have a fledgling program that um could have some, some real promise. Um, and then there's also uh other, other organizations like the Utah Housing Preservation Fund that, that we work with that. Um, tends to, to buy projects that are gonna potentially get flipped to um market rate housing and, and they preserve that affordable. Component there. But uh a- a- any, any questions on that? Yes, Bill?
Go ahead and. Just kudos to Elias. He's the hardest working banker I've ever worked with. I had multiple calls with him on a deal earlier this year where he would take my call at ten thirty at night. Most bankers stop at five. Um, Elias has a passion for affordable housing, so to the extent Ogden needs a financing expert to talk to, he's the guy.
Thank you, Bill.
Any questions, Marcia? Yeah, it's a lot of information for sure to, to digest.
Certainly, and at the end, Jonathan and, and um, I think they're gonna talk a little bit more about kind of the public finance side and some of the things that the bank.
Okay.
Kind of can assist there, but our contact information, we, we recognize it's a lot of information to put into slides and it's hard to go through, but. Our contact information is at the end of this slide. If you have any questions, we're, not all of us are accessible till ten thirty at night. Some of us are, so, uh, but no, we're, we're happy to answer any questions and realize it's a lot and we're always happy if someone just wants to bounce ideas off or says, hey, I'm looking at. This type of a project, we're always happy to, to fill those calls and just kind of talk through it, so.
Okay, so maybe I, I have one quick question. So a light tech deal cannot be a for sale product, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
And. You, from a, from the state standpoint, I think you mentioned the Olean locker, but from a state standpoint, you can only apply for those funds. On a annual basis, is that correct still?
Yeah, there's, there's some programs that have different windows uh of time and, and I'm not as familiar with those, but. Um, they, they'd be very specific to those programs.
I'll ask, I have got a bunch of other questions.
Okay, we'll bring Jonathan back up, yeah.
Nice chair, Richie.
Yeah.
This conversation is absolutely great. We're, we're gonna have to do something like this again.
Sure.
You know, my brain is already, my cup is overflowing. But, but I think this is something that's gonna really help us in the long term. Um, so we need to. Kind of do a rerun.
Key in on it some more.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Oh, go ahead and turn that mic on there. Here we go.
Thank you for the opportunity to present uh to the council this evening. I'm Mark Anderson. I'm with Zion's Public Finance as well and. I'm a recovering city manager, worked for Heber City for twenty years as, as a city manager in eight years as a finance director, but been with. Zion's Bank for the last five and a half years. Um, just, we wanted to cover some other economic development tools. We recognize that Ogden City has used many of these tools successfully to bring some of your projects about. Also need to comment that as financial advisors, we're limited and, you know, the, the advice that we can give to the city. Because we are not the city's financial advisor. Jonathan, for example, is the financial advisor to Weber County, but. So we can talk in more broad terms, but we can't talk about specific project within. Uh, Ogden City and make recommendations as to what the city ought to do. Um, uh, familiar to special assessment bonds, uh, that'll allows. Uh, property owners to uh have debt issued for the benefit of public infrastructure. And that's limited to borrowing one third of the assessed market valuation in a twenty year term. So uh, for example, the, in Heber City, years ago, we had a, about ten property owners come to us and say, we wanna build this road. Would the city sponsor the special assessment bond for us and we'll make the debt service payment. So that's, that's an option. Um, C-PACE is for commercial property that. Uh, uh, wants to privately uh develop ru- renewable energy projects. Or energy efficient improvement, improvements to commercial property. Uh, and that's a taxable uh tool, but it still gives, you know, some access to part of the capital stack that may make it. The project more feasible if there are components of the project. I know Black Desert and Ivans. You know, recently issued the largest C-PACE bond in the state of Utah with the, their project. And we, we can talk a little bit about them as far as uh. Uh, public infrastructure districts. Um, so other economic development tools, tax increment financing. Uh, this is uh, uh, a question of, is, is this a project? That the city believes is important to the city and has the developer been able to demonstrate? That without some kind of public participation through tax increment, uh, the project would not be feasible. And so here's just some graphical, uh, some graphs that show how that works. Uh, really, the school district's the largest. Uh. Uh, taxing entity within uh any jurisdiction. And to have theirs and the county's participation and, and the cities, you know, really important to make that an effective tool. On the left side, you, you see what increment might be uh created as taxable values increase. And that might be able to go towards financing a project. And on the right side, you see how it affects the individual entities. Being the school district, the city and the county and, and after the twenty year term that that assessment bond runs at the maximum length. Uh, all those uh revenues will uh come back to the taxing entity after the, the. Uh, CRA is over.
Keep in mind that all of these tools, these assessment bonds, tax increment financing, just ways that the governments here in Utah are authorized to. Participate, to help reduce costs of private projects across the, across the city. So it generally, it means there's a mechanism to help pay for public infrastructure. Uh, specifically, uh, with the tax increment tool, you have more flexibility to include some private uh improvements. Some lip, more so than the city would have the flexibility to help with uh outside of the, the RDA.
Um, public infrastructure districts are a new tool. Uh, some might find them controversial. Um, and uh I've actually spoken to somebody within your community about a project that needed to have a bridge built. Uh, at one time and uh. we would recommend that communities have a PID policy, so if people bring those applications forward, you know what type of, they know what kind of development you're trying to attract and have a process to evaluate them. But this is a tool that allows developers to fund a public infrastructure or infrastructure will be used publicly at a tax-exempt rate. The city or counties, the entity that creates these districts and the debt that they issue is off of your books. It's, it's not a obligation of the community. And it's a legally separate government entity. And you can secure the bonds through either a limited tax or through an assessment. And because interest rates are as high as they are, we're seeing more people looking at assessments versus property taxes. And you really probably have to have a pretty mature project to be able to successfully sell these bonds in the market because there's not a lot of money in the market for these high-yield type investments. I was going to mention Black Desert had two parking structures within their project that was funded through public infrastructure district. Not that they were going to be owned by the city and maintained by them. It was with the premise that they would be available for public use that would benefit the convention center and their boardwalk with their commercial use. So there are some, and the city had no desire to maintain a parking structure, and so the HOA was going to be responsible to, to maintain those structures.
We keep hearing that the, one of the major impediments to affordable housing is the cost of the housing, so legislatures authorize this tool, which which theoretically would reduce the cost. If you don't have to use your own cash or you don't have to use private equity with higher rates of return, 15, 20% return, and you can spread those costs out over 30 years, this tool may reduce the cost of the, of the housing. And I think the argument here is if you're borrowing these, borrowing funds through these public infrastructure districts, which a lot of home builders are asking for across the state and developers are asking for, the borrowing costs right now are probably around 8%, seven and a half, 8%, depending on the maturity of the development, depending on the the equity infusion in the project, et cetera. How far along are you in the development phase? Do you have home builders who have contracted to buy the land? Do you already have those agreements in place? That drives the interest costs, but if you're talking seven and a half to 8% for 30 years fixed rate, that's cheaper financing in a lot of cases for the development community. Mr. Knowlton knows better, you know, whether that would, would work or not with his cash flows and expected return on investment. These do come with some governmental, I don't, I guess maybe potential controversy because you're taxing a certain geography within your community differently than you are everybody else by imposing a special assessment or a property tax in just that public infrastructure district. The legislature is currently entertaining a different tool. It's similar to these. They're calling them now infrastructure, infrastructure financing districts, which would really authorize assessment bonds only and the infrastructure could be funded with these tools, a PID or similar to it, this infrastructure district, be funded upfront. But before the home is actually built and an occupancy certificate is provided by the city, the lien, the assessment lien has to be cleared off. So it doesn't extend the lien 30 years for residential projects. It requires that, that lien to be released and paid off upon occupancy. But the, perhaps that helps the costs. And perhaps that helps with cities and counties who are, have been historically reluctant to use this tool to be able to use it and help facilitate some lower cost development improvement opportunities. So we'll see what happens with that and how that is received in the legislature this year.
Other economic development tools, HCRZ housing and transit reinvestment zones. And this helps to try and address Utah's housing problem as well as, you know, trying to reduce impacts on transportation infrastructure. If we have a population that has easy access to a front-runner station.
This is an example, like Mr. Knowlton suggested, about certain, certain rights of the city being taken away from the city and mandates from the legislature to use tools that will help improve density because this doesn't require the city's approval per se. It does require the city's, I think, consent. You do submit the application. But once it's approved, or if it's approved by the governor's office of economic development, it's really out of the city's control. But it does help density around transit stops.
Next, public-private partnerships. We probably look at this from a more narrow perspective to where you enter into a relationship with a private party and you, you share a risk rather than the city assuming all the risk. And the city ultimately owns all the assets that are constructed through this partnership. It's more of a, maybe a construction or operational agreement afterwards that we see P3s. I don't know if there's any great examples of that in the state of Utah.
Not really. Public-private partnerships are unique because they're defined by different people in different ways. It is interesting that in, as Elias and Justin suggested earlier, sometimes municipalities are donating land that they own, using their assets to reduce the cost of the project. Well, in some people's minds, that's defined as a public-private partnership because the city's donating land. The developer does the development. We don't often see that as, as a real win-win because the city's losing out on the land, or maybe if you do keep the land and you're taking some some lease agreements or lease income from it, that might be of some benefit. But are you really maximizing the opportunity? UTA is using a different sort of P3 model right now, exploring a different model where they, they need new office spaces. But they're not just going to build it for themselves and they're looking for ways to have somebody else help pay for that. So they're considering a development of their, their area, a multi-story facility that's, that's used by the private sector and UTA. And the private sector rental incomes help pay for the office space that the UTA folks occupy. And in that case, they own the building. They own the block. They help finance all of that themselves, but the repayment source is shared by other tenants, you know, so in that particular case, that in some people's minds would be considered a public-private partnership. In the, in the sort of strictest definition of this tool, think of roads. Usually it's a public asset that's operated, maintained, perhaps financed by a private sector entity without government taking a lot of risk. They still own the roads, but someone else says, we can build it, we can operate it, we can toll it and pay for it cheaper than you can as a city, so let us do what we need to do. Get out of our way. And you can still be the owner of that road, but we're going to do this the way we want to do it. City doesn't necessarily have to take undue risk because of that. That's called an availability, or excuse me, a demand, a demand concessionaire agreement or in a public-private partnership. An availability concessionaire agreement means that the government does take risk in that type of, of an arrangement. Meaning you might own the road, but, well, not but, and a private sector entity might build it, they might maintain it, they might operate it, they might toll it. And if it doesn't work out, the city is on the, on the hook to cover any gaps. Because of this housing environment right now, we're seeing more government entities saying, that's okay. We'll take the risk. You know, it might not be a risk they're willing to take for roads because we're not in that situation right now here in Utah like other states are. But they are saying that we might take the risk for housing. As a case in point, Park City has basically borrowed almost $40 million to build deed-restricted housing for their employees. They just said that as the city council is a priority. We want to take this matter seriously. We won't fix the problem for everybody in the state. We won't solve the housing affordability crisis in Park City. But we'll help our employees and we will finance the, the construction costs for these, these units. And it's always going to be Park City employees who use it. I know Park City School Districts had similar type conversations because they can't afford to keep teachers in their area without taking some risk on their own, some of the onus upon themselves.
How many units do you know?
Under the Park City? I don't know.
They're just past the entrance on Highway 40 to Park City. Was that 248? There's that whole hillside's filling up with them.
Did you say these are lease? Sorry, lease?
No, they're deed-restricted units where they, they own them, but they're restricted in the amount that they can appreciate. So if they sell them, they're restricted how much profit they can make off the sale of them to try and keep them.
And do they have to be
I think they call it attainable housing versus affordable too.
Do they have to be sold to the city employees if they're correct, the result? We've heard about their other discussions of similar, similar concept for large employers within the state. They have a lot of employees in a concentrated location and those employees can't afford to live where they're employed. So in partnership with home builders who have have graciously really determined that they can help in, in certain ways, they've created nonprofit arms, they've, they've made the cost of the of the housing a little less expensive by foregoing profit. But the employers have said, here's some land, we're going to contribute. The home builders have partnered and said, here's what we're going to do with with these homes and we're not going to take our profit margin for this particular number of units. And it might be 15 homes. There might be 20 homes. It's not a lot, but it's, it's something that they're doing to help some of the employees.
So Park City has a greenfield basically to start with, or they had a greenfield. Is that, and they own the land. Is that how they did the deed restrictions? Do you know?
I don't know the technical aspects of the deed restrictions, but yes, they don't own the land.
And did you say they were condo, condominiums?
Houses.
No, but the previous one, the other ones.
Oh, which other ones?
They're the same? Okay, houses, okay.
And maybe just finishing up, we've already talked about some of these things. Donation of land by public entities. Park City is a great example of that. Lending or donation of money to finance or fund public infrastructure. I know Wausatch County Housing Authority has lent the self-help housing program $2 million to put in their infrastructure and as the houses sell, they get paid back. Or I know they've donated money to a developer for an affordable housing development that's higher density in exchange for deed restrictions and the use of the housing for essential workers, which would be, you know, city workers, county workers, schoolteachers type thing on the west side of Heber. And we've also seen requirements for developments to include affordable components. And if they were unwilling to do it within the development themselves, they were allowed to pay a fee in lieu. And I know Wausatch County has used that to finance about 50 housing units that they ran out through their housing authority. And that's where the money's come from to loan to these other developers or self-help housing programs that have helped fund those things. And I think everybody's familiar that there are some, lots of zoning ordinances out there that allow bonus densities for affordable housing developments. I think that's all we had prepared. Do you have any questions?
Thank you very much for coming. I, I think we all feel like that's a lot of really good information and appreciate your expertise and sharing that with us. And also, Justin, Elias and Bill, thank you as well for being part of this discussion. I think council member hires, right? We need to probably continue this discussion in the interest of time, probably, though we need to move on and thank you. Yeah. We have three items that are kind of together, but why don't we go ahead and invite Brandon and Justin up to discuss the airline incentive first and then we can move into the budget amendment and the land transfer and participation agreement discussion. That's okay.
Okay, I'll, I'll give you the background and the information and then Justin can talk about the actual technical details of the action tonight. So tonight's proposal, and we appreciate you hearing this in work session and council the same night. That's really helpful for us when it comes to schedule. So thank you, Janine and everyone. So the proposal is to provide startup incentive to Breeze Airways for operations to begin at the Ogden Airport with four flights a week to the John Wayne Airport in Orange County. And so I'll just give a brief kind of executive summary of, of why this is important and what we're thinking in terms of the incentives. So this is all in your packet too, so we won't cover this specifically. I appreciate the write-up, but Ogden's been an airport well before 41, but essentially the way that we know it now, it's been there since around 41. It was originally used as a military airport and then commercial air service did fly out of Ogden until the 60s. And then again, we had commercial air service from 2012 to 22 with Allegiant, as you, most of you recall, and then one year with Avelo. It's currently a reliever airport for Salt Lake City, meaning if there's fog or inclement weather, we can take aircraft that typically lands at Ogden Airport, or excuse me, Salt Lake City Airport. Most of you recall, maybe Ken, I think you're the only one that wasn't here, that in 2020, we adopted the airport master plan. And we did that with quite a bit of outreach, quite a bit of discussion with the airport community and others. We created at the time of planning advisory group that consisted of a lot of representatives, representatives from a lot of those folks there. The city, the county, Roy City, we had FAA folks there, representatives from GA, small businesses, tenants at the airport. So they were all part of this advisory committee to help create the master plan. We also did user surveys at that time. We created monthly newsletters to update people on the progress. We posted things to our city website. We had a workshop and an open house, all with the intent of creating a really robust master plan. As I mentioned, all of you were part of that in terms of the approval in May 2020, except for Ken. Doug, we'll have to call him back. And we also had an advisory committee active then, and those are the folks that were part of that committee during this time. So all of that input came into our master plan. And really, out of the multi-page plan, it really boils down to this single vision that Ogden's role as an economic engine is to serve and cultivate general aviation, commercial passenger service growth and aeronautical business support. And so today's proposal to bring back commercial passenger service is in the fulfillment of the vision of the master plan. So on to Breeze. Breeze is a relatively new carrier. They are a low-cost carrier, as was Allegiant and Avelo, so they focus on they focus on that price point. They currently have about 17 Airbus 220s. For airplane people, that's probably important. I like to drive, so I don't know much about airplanes. They have 63 more on order, so they are a growing airline. They serve 45 communities in 27 states. They flew 2 million guests in '23 and are projected to do 3 million at the end of this year. Uh, they flew two million guests in twenty-three and are projected to do three million at the end of this year. So again, they're, they are on a growth curve.
So they actually own their airplanes. They're not leasing them from someone else.
As I understand.
Great. Thank you.
Uh, and we won't cover this, but this is a slide deck, um, and this, this presentation will be on the public record and made available to you. So I included these slides from Breeze themselves and it talks a lot about, uh, some of the things I just mentioned.
May I?
Yes.
So Rich, why is that important? Can you help us understand if they own versus lease?
Just more skin in the game.
More skin in the game?
Yep. That's, that's really what it means to me.
Investment.
Yeah, they, they are, they're buying their own infrastructure. They don't, you know, so they're all in.
Okay.
So that's, that means to me.
I heard you say, as far as I know, could you help us make sure you a hundred percent that that's the case? Or do you need to help us double check, make sure that's the case?
No, we had the conversation. I don't know the details of it, but we asked that question.
That is the case. They own them.
Yeah. So if you want more.
No, no, I just, I just heard you say it as far as I know or something like that.
That's what I mean. Uh, so in terms of the proposal, uh, we are, um, proposing, uh, that, uh, we support their new operation here at the airport. Uh, they would start, um, pending approval tonight. Um, February twenty-first of twenty-four. They like to make an announcement, um, about seventy-five days prior to their start date, which is why, um, we have tentatively scheduled an announcement of, of tonight's action. If it goes well, uh, for tomorrow, all of you received an email for that. Um, so that will put them public, uh, into the marketplace and they can start their advertising between now and, and February twenty-first to generate that, um, that demand. As I mentioned, four weekly flights, uh, which is great. Um, that was more than what Allegiant, uh, started off with originally. So that's wonderful. And it's to that Orange County, um, kind of, uh, Disneyland location. Uh, so their commitment, um, as you know, uh, low-cost airlines and really most of the airlines don't make, um, service commitments. Uh, and because of that, it does present a bit of risk. We know that Allegiant and available were able to leave abruptly because, um, they don't make service commitments in, in general. And so it really looks at the level of investment they have versus the level of investment we have and combines that with the benefit that we each would get from a deal like this. And so.
Let me back you up a little. I, I just don't want to assume that we're just farming people out. We, we want to be able to get them back too. Do they, do they, you know, you've just talked about a departure time and never an arrival.
Well, arrival's an hour before.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I just wanted to make sure we were going to be able to get our people back.
I think so. I just thought we'd care about leaving, right? Going to Disneyland. Um, so their commitment is, um, having that first route to Orange County with additional routes as demand dictates. Again, they're growing. They're looking for new, um, locations, uh, to serve and they think Ogden is an underserved area in terms of what's available, um, by whom, uh, at what cost in this general location. So, um, they're, as they said even today, they're bullish on Ogden. Um, their commitment will be in the form of, uh, seventy, seven hundred and fifty to eight hundred thousand dollars in addition to the two hundred and fifty thousand from us. Uh, that, um, comes in the cost of ground handling costs, um, uh, crew, some fuel, those kinds of things. I think I have a slide on that in a minute. Um, and so that's, that represents the total investment generally they would make into a new location and a new route. It was about a million dollars. Um, our commitment would be to provide the terminal, uh, for their, for their use. So we would have TSA back into the terminal. Uh, there would be, um, the holding facilities that we currently have, um, other amenities like rental cars and the other things that, um, we've had in the past. They would have those at their disposal as well. Um, and then the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar, uh, startup support. So that would come in the form of, uh, cash that would be sourced from the BDO, um, fund balance. And it would be, uh, given to them in three quarterly increments. The first one would be March twenty-four. So that's kind of the initial push. The second one would be July of, uh, twenty-four and the third one would be November twenty-four. And this is important for a reason. Um, and it's this reason here. The benefits that we derive from this proposal would be, uh, obviously local service to a place that, uh, a lot of us love to go to. So, um, there is demand and that would benefit our citizens, um, of course, at a low cost. Um, one of the most important things is the FAA entitlement that we once received due to employments that, um, occurred through mostly Allegiant, but Avelo also. And that entitlement comes from the FAA. It's in the form of a million dollars annually. Um, and so I, I wrote some examples there. So if, um, Breeze was to, uh, have ten thousand employments in twenty-four, then in, in twenty-six, we would receive, um, the million dollars from the FAA. That's an entitlement number. Um, and so that's, uh, we are entitled to it based on certain conditions. In addition to that, we would receive another million dollar entitlement from the, um, from the Bill Act. And so that is also an entitlement that would come as a result of ten thousand employments in twenty twenty-six. Breeze expects that they would hit those ten thousand employments by December of twenty-four, which is why we spread out that incentive uh, quarterly over the year. Um, because putting in two hundred and fifty thousand and potentially getting two million, um, immediately and then a million thereafter, uh, based on those employments is, is really critical and makes this investment, um, uh, sound. So again, that would just continue on. So for every year that, um, we reached ten thousand employments, we would receive two years later because of the offset, another million dollars. And that money, um, is all airport money. That can only be used on airport for airport uses, infrastructure, those kinds of things. In addition to those dollars that come in, we, because of employments, we do get ancillary fees. So parking fees. Um, if you look at the, um, four weekly departures at a fifty-two, uh, week year at about a seventy percent load factor, we can calculate some of these numbers. Um, so sixty thousand dollars in parking fees a year roughly based on those, um, those trips. Landing fees and fuel flowage would apply, but, um, this also is, um, those, those two line items would also be considered as the incentive in terms of the waiver. So we would waive those fees for two years. And that's consistent with what we did with Allegiant and Avelo. And so that's because we did it to them as we get new airlines. Um, we treat them similar until we come up with a policy statement that says otherwise. And so that's why, um, those two things are considered and that would be helpful for them as well.
What, what will our landing fee be after the two years? How much is it per landing? I, I would never known.
I'll have to pull Bryant up for that specific detail. Uh, as you know, he's our airport manager and he's the smart guy.
Yeah. So our rate currently is a dollar twenty-five per one thousand pounds of gross certified landing weight. So it's not the weight of the aircraft that actually lands. It's the heaviest it could be. Because that's a, uh, leader as to the wear and tear on the runway and the money that has to be put out in the future to replace the infrastructure. So rough numbers, I think it's like two hundred and sixteen dollars every time they land.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
And so those fees there and landing and fuelage, uh, reflect the yearly fees based on that calculation after the, the waiver. Um, car rentals and the other rentals we would get, um, from the folks that are providing services to the airline and the passengers. Um, uh, those are just fixed rates. So those happen, uh, in general, basically. And so just a few questions that we have, um, that we've had as we've gone through this. Um, so what will the money be used for from their perspective? Again, I kind of mentioned that. So staffing, training, ground handling, equipment that we are, the FBOs don't offer, um, marketing, fuel, those kinds of things, general startup costs for a new, uh, route and location. If the funds, um, are approved, where would the source be? I mentioned that BDO lease revenue. So it's non-taxpayer dollars. Um, so the taxpayers already subsidize the airport, uh, in general. And so this does not add to that. Um, is it safe to fly in and out of, um, Ogden for passenger, passenger service? Uh, the short answer is yes, but, uh, you can read that essentially, um, the fact that we've had uh, passenger service since the forties and as recent as, uh, two thousand and twelve to twenty-two, um, confirms that, um, passenger service air traffic is safe, uh, at OGD and, um, FAA con- conforms that when flight paths are created and the airline actually certifies their aircraft with, um, the FAA to determine that those aircrafts are tuned appropriately for that flight path. So, um, I don't think any airline would consider coming here if it wasn't safe. Nor would Salt Lake City, um, uh, have us as their reliever. Will Breeze make any additional commitments to the city? I mentioned that as well. It's difficult for, for these airlines to make these kinds of commitments and to maintain the flexibility that they need to be a low-cost carrier. And so, um, in addition, there is no additional commitment beyond the original investment, um, that they'll make to us at this point, but spreading out that incentive that, that they're asking for, um, will protect a little bit of our side. So if they do end up leaving before they get to the ten thousand employments or before, um, we reach the end of the year, then we shorten that, um, total incentive essentially. It's important to note that the two fifty is, um, a number that works for them in terms of their, um, total expenditures. But it is a number that we were using as a grant match for, uh, FAA grant, um, that's called SCASD. Again, I'll refer to Bryant for what that actually means, but, um, essentially it's a grant that FAA creates for this very specific purpose.
Yeah. So it is actually through DOT.
Oh, DOT.
But, uh, it's called the, uh, Small Communities Air Service Development Grant or SCASD for short. And it's essentially, uh, where the federal government will put up the bulk of the money. We asked for a million dollars. And then our local share would have been two hundred and fifty thousand. And the idea is that we had a very competitive application, but it's, um, the strength of your competitors that determines whether or not you get the grant. So even though we showed well, we didn't come home with a trophy. And, uh, we're open to put in for it. Ogden did put in for it in twenty, either thirteen or twenty fourteen and received a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant at that time. So we have actually successfully gotten that grant in, in the past, but the investment from the city, the local share is identical to what we would have put up had the federal government, uh, put up the million dollars.
So this kind of thing is common and then the government recognizes that small, um, community airports, uh, need these kinds of tools to be competitive. Um, so again, we talked about the million dollars from the FAA entitlement and then the million from the additional and the BIL entitlement. What can they be spent on? And those, like most or all of airport, um, revenue must stay on the airport. And so, uh, as we continue to develop the west side and open that up for, um, redevelopment, then having that million dollars a year, again, we've, we've enjoyed that for ten or twelve years when we had Allegiant. Um, and so that has been reduced in this next fiscal year to a hundred and fifty thousand. And so that hampers our airport budget by having the ten thousand employments, which Breeze feels like they can reach at the end of next year. Then that brings that million back, which then allows us to do, um, all of these wonderful things that, that currently are in our CIP. Will Breeze seek additional incentives in the future? Um, so the, the startup support and the, um, landing fees and fu- fuel flowage fee waivers are what they're asking for now. They think that's what they need to be successful. Obviously as demand happens and, and their service grows, there could be additional requests. They don't have, they haven't projected any of those today and we can't guarantee that they wouldn't make any requests, but you all are in control. Um, this is the process that we follow, um, from an appropriation standpoint. And so if those requests were to be made in the future, we'd come back to, to you all and, and, and present that as we are tonight. And so that's a good segue into.
Can I, can I add that question before you turn it over? So in your conversations with them, have they indicated at all that, hey, you know, this works good? It, it looked like, it looks like that airline is expanding pretty dramatically with two hundred new airplanes on order. Um, are they thinking that maybe they find some other routes that come out of here or?
Yes.
So they, well, that, that conversation has, has happened.
Absolutely.
Okay. That's, that's great news.
Right. And those, in those conversations, have they had any explanation for the number of withdrawals they've had in cities recently?
Mm-hmm.
There's a track record of committing, staying for a short time and then leaving.
Yeah. I actually, um, we talked to, about that with them recently and I have some notes under Sarah's chair. So essentially, uh, there were three, um, they've withdrawn, um, over their years of service, um, uh, four to five, they, they pulled out of four to five markets total. Um, and so, uh, three, I think, were the ones that caught the news headlines mostly. So, uh, the Tulsa Airport, the San Antonio Airport, and then they, um, they suspended transcontinental, uh, travel out of, um, out of another airport. And essentially, as they tell us, those were related to fuel issues and competitive, um, pricing that encroached into their market space. And so essentially because they are price, um, point driven and they are, um, flexible in terms of how they operate. Um, they received that aggressive pricing constraint and couldn't compete anymore. And so they, they abandoned the route.
From other airlines at the same airport or from neighboring airports?
Other airlines at the same airport.
Would that same pressure apply from Salt Lake?
Uh, no, because, um, that airline is, uh, Delta, um, largely. And they're not necessarily going to come down to the price point that, uh, that they're at now. And so they don't see that pricing, um, constraint or that pricing pressure at this route, um, now with, with that airline. And that's the major route that, uh, they would be competing with. And so when you're looking at choice, uh, to go to this destination, you can go out of Provo. Um, you can go out of Salt Lake or you can come out of Ogden. And Provo is a, is kind of outside that market. They operate in Provo as well. And so they would be, um, tailoring that same route to that market and they wouldn't want to cannibalize themselves. Um, but the, uh, the competition at the closest airport, which is Salt Lake, wouldn't essentially um, be threatening to them because that price differential is so huge. So people, um, making the drive to fly out of Ogden i- is more appealing to them.
How have they solved the pilot shortage problem for, for themselves? Do they, you know, that's been an issue for?
The what?
Pilot shortage.
Yeah, I, I think, and, and Jared, you had this conversation, I think specifically, so you can, um, chime in here, come on up. But, uh, if, from what I recall, it's essentially the size of their operation right now. So because they, um, don't have a ton of airplanes, they have a crew that they can manage in accordance to the number of airplanes. And, uh, and this is something that's again, outside of my, my, um, pay grade, but air, uh, pilots like to fly out of the smaller airlines from what I understand. And maybe Bryant can add to that and maybe Jared can add to that, but that's the information that, uh, that, because we asked the same question.
So yeah, uh, Brandon's nailed most of it, but we did ask them that specific question. You know, what's making it for you able to get pilots where others are struggling? And their answer was, was pretty short and simple to us in the sense they said, well, we're a new company. And, uh, when you're new, uh, everybody wants to get in on the ground floor because then you establish seniority. And so they have pilots that are with other airlines that are coming to them because they can get in on that ground floor. It gives them the opportunity to get a leg up and move up quicker in the chain. Also they are non-union, um, which allows them to be very flexible on what they can and can't do. They've, uh, iterated to us that on a couple of instances, uh, just the, the company itself went ahead and said in one month, they're like, hey, you know, we just think everyone deserves a raise and we're going to do some things to match it. And they're able to just do that on the spot, uh, versus having to go through a bunch of negotiations and discussions and stuff on that. Um, and so when we brought that up, because that was a big hesitancy for us, it was like, well, you know, this is what we're hearing nationwide. How is that not affecting you? Um, and they didn't even blink an eye and said, no, we, we do not have any staffing or pilot shortages, nor do we plan on it moving forward. We have, you know, the things that have already been mentioned, plus we're buying and have brand new aircraft. Everybody likes to fly the newest toy. Um, and, um, so they, they weren't concerned about that in the least, but we did spend quite a bit of time on that subject.
So just real quick, if I remember right, the other two airlines struggled for a lot of other reasons, but one of the reasons that we heard was that they were empty coming back. Is that still a fear? I mean, we're, we're going to go to Disneyland, but.
We got to bring them back. That's what Rich said. Um, I'll ask Bryant to come up and speak to some of the issues. Um, I'll ask Bryant to come up and speak to some of the issues that um Allegiant uh had compared to what Breeze might face.
Bryant, would you turn the mic on there? There we go. Thanks.
Okay. I mean, it wasn't on any of the other times I spoke.
No, it was on before. I was, I had a close eye on that green light there.
All right.
It's just like a tower. Yeah.
All right, so um Allegiant, it's the pilot shortage, and they have an additional problem because they were, they have all an all Airbus fleet. And that's the same aircraft that the legacy carriers are flying. And, you know, you could say one way or the other, they they may have made it worse because now they're moving so that they are both a Boeing and an Airbus fleet. So to me, that's gonna make their pilots even more desirable for larger carriers to pick off. So it's strictly the pilot shortage was the issue with Allegiant. But their absence caused some additional problems. Uh, there was a lower rate negotiated for uh fuel turns uh every time they had fuel. Uh, once Allegiant was gone, even though Avelo got the benefit of that same pricing, once Allegiant was gone and it was originally negotiated with them, they went up substantially. Uh, had the same problem with the ground handler. Here's a company that only has two customers, Allegiant and Avelo, and they lose half their revenue by Allegiant no longer being there. The prices went up substantially for Avelo as well. And then Avelo, the coup de grace, was the fact that they um they knew how much money you could make on the East Coast. Uh, all the startup airlines, if you look at that route map from um even Breeze, it's all much more concentrated on the East Coast. Uh, Avelo told me they were making so much money going, serving from um New Haven, Connecticut to uh multiple points in Florida. It was just, uh, yeah, Ogden couldn't compete, even though that they were making money in Ogden. They could make so much more. So you just take those multiple uh effects, and that's why uh Avelo left. So in Breeze's case, they have uh the slightly smaller equipment, so it's kind of specialized. It's not as easy to poach their in uh their pilots. So their pilots, uh, not only is it a seniority issue that uh Brandon had spoken of, but they also have uh the uh smaller equipment. Uh, Delta, I think, is the only other major carrier that's using the Airbus two twenty right now. So it makes it so it's a little more difficult to immediately hit the ground running at another airport certified in that type of aircraft.
So part of the question was Allegiant was coming back empty. Is that the case?
Um, yeah, I'm sorry. I beg wait there. Um, the the numbers don't bear that out. We had arrivals and departures tracked uh on every flight, and they were roughly equal.
So maybe a better question isn't it that they're coming back empty. It was they're coming back with the same people that live here. And in order to grow economic development, we want outside people coming here. And so that's what I'm, I get maybe a better question. Sorry, I maybe I.
No, I I was speaking today to uh Sarah Tolliver. She's right there. Visit. Oh, sorry. And she indicated that uh a huge amount of their traffic for the ski resorts and such comes out of the LA area. And so this is looking at uh advertising Allegiant. For some reason, I'm not sure the exact reason, but they didn't like uh marketing uh outside of Ogden. And so that that could be part of it. But like I say, both inbound and outbound were fairly equal at about eighty-two, ninety percent full.
So with with this, there is a a budget piece to it. And as as was mentioned uh by Brandon, so the proposal um in this tonight's ordinance is to appropriate out of fund balance in the in the BDO fund, two hundred and fifty thousand that would be then transferred into the airport fund, which would there would be there um to then be used for those incentive payments and the timing that Brandon spoke about. And so the total appropriation is is a half a million, so two hundred and fifty thousand going out of BDO and that going into the airport fund.
Is there any way to do that in the three parts? So a budget amendment tonight for the eighty-eight thousand, budget amendment in four months to another eighty-eight thousand.
We we could. It would require coming back here again um for those actions. Um, that is a an option that we could look at.
I guess it gives us an option if that's if something goes wrong, and then it's not just sitting in the BDO operations.
Yeah, I think uh I think that would change the way that we have structured the deal with them and probably change um some of their intentions because that's really just an eighty-three thousand dollar incentive, not a two hundred fifty thousand dollar incentive. What you're not seeing is, because it's an administrative function, is a contract that would manage all of all of this. And so in that contract, um, it would have the uh incentive amount with the payment schedule. So that's the reliance that they need to make the investment. If they had to rely on um additional um considerations, then then it changes it substantially.
Then is there an internal way for if it doesn't happen, then it can come back to our general fund?
Yes, I think that's a better way to deal with it. That is, for some reason, we don't expend the full incentive amount. Then council would have the ability to then reappropriate that.
I would appreciate that.
Yeah, that's a good question. What, so why aren't we seeing that contract other than it's an administrative function?
It's still in draft form, and because tonight's action is gonna dictate most of the terms.
Uh, just a clarification too. A lot of people think we're incentivizing for half a million because of the budget opening has to show five hundred thousand, but it's recognizing the same two fifty twice. So if anybody is watching, there's a, it's two steps for the same amount of money. That's why it says five hundred, but still only two fifty.
Yep, correct. Uh, Brandon, is this company profitable or are they in the in the red right now? Uh, we asked them that. They're not profitable, but they anticipate being profitable this year.
How long have they not been profitable for?
They've been in operation since twenty-one. So they're considered in the startup stage.
For three years.
Yep. And so to reach profitability in the first three years, I don't know how that, you know, compares in the airline industry. But for other businesses, that would be a great thing.
How many markets did you say they're in? I remember seventeen planes.
Uh, twenty-five, I believe the number was currently, twenty-three or twenty-five.
And then they've pulled out of four or five, you said?
Four to five, yeah. That's the number they gave us, four to five.
Do we have a, do we have a like a market analysis for the specific specific destination?
They do. We've yet to receive it. Um, we would hope to have it by tonight, but we didn't get it. So they have one that uh they've committed to send to us. A lot of their modeling is proprietary, so they're trying to scrub that to share with us publicly.
And this action is for when?
Tonight.
But we don't have a market analysis that you've seen yet?
No, but the fact that, what's that?
Are we rushing this?
Well, again, the deadline was set by them in terms of their need to be advertising in the marketplace to hit the February twenty-first. Um, so the the idea that they're interested in our market um tells us that despite the fact we haven't seen their report and their numbers, that they believe it enough to invest eight hundred thousand dollars into our airport.
So in other words, we 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 weren't out recruiting Breeze to come here. They came to us and asked, how can we do business in Ogden?
Well, we do general um recu- recruiting. Uh, Bryant goes to the routes conference every year. So we're always doing, and Liesl does some things. Uh, but yes, that was that was something that happened um that way. And really, it comes down to the the risk, right? All of these low-cost carriers that we're likely to have either now in the past or in the future are going to operate under similar models where they need flexibility to maintain their low-cost efficiency to provide that to their customers. So there will always be an element of risk to the city. The question is, does the um, does the benefit justify the risk? The fact that we have the opportunity not only to provide that service to our community for a uh relatively small investment, but to then receive back all of that entitlement money in a short amount of time.
Do they pay rent in the area, in the facility then at all? For the space that they're?
In what facility?
In I, in the terminal, I guess.
So the TSA would pay rent.
The TSA.
Mm-hmm. Uh, the ground handler that they would use. Breeze does not pay rent. They pay uh landing fees and fuel flowage. We get a percentage of that. But again, those are, those would be waived for the first two years.
But does that ever happen?
Uh, rent? Not, Bryant could ask that, but I I don't know.
Sorry. Every airport I know of is unique in the way that they do their fees. And so you can charge a fee. The large airports stack on a lot of fees. Salt Lake Airport, you know, they'll pay for uh use of the oversized baggage claim. They'll pay for uh certain uh guides at the gates. If they don't invest them themselves and they want to use things that the airport owns, they get a fee for that as well. Um, I believe when you're uh in a small market, as Ogden is, that you want to keep your fees simple. So we charge rental fees for TSA. Um, Breeze will not have any of their own employees at the airport except for their flight crews. Now, they have their corporate offices based in Salt Lake, so they are nearby. But all the people that you'd greet at the counter to check your bag and everything, those will be contract employees. Uh, we put it under the term of ground handling, so they flag the aircraft in, they park it. They operate all the tickets and they do all that. Those people will pay rent to us. And that's on uh Brandon's uh list that he showed earlier.
And those are fees that are dictated by the council. Um, and so as time goes on, those fees can be adjusted if necessary.
All right, any other questions? We we have a couple of minutes here to wrap up the work session. The three items that we did not discuss in work session are on the council agenda for later. So we'll, it'll be a council work session, regular session combo, I guess, unless you can do it in two minutes.
No, but it's something you've heard many times before, so it won't be.
Won't be all new.
Won't be all new.
Yeah.
I've got more questions, but we can ask them in there.
And we can, when we can further continue this discussion about the airline incentive in council minutes on the agenda as well, so. All right, with that, we'll uh take a quick break so we can finish our chips and head on over.